I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing is to approve the agenda. We've got a couple of changes. One is we got 4A, which is the handout you received in front of your spot today when you got here regarding setting up interviews for boards and commissions. That will be just kind of a looking at your calendars and see if we can pick up a date to get those interviews done so we can approve those in May because they start June 1st. The other one is in the consent agenda, the minutes from April 1st are not done yet, so we are going to take that letter A off the consent agenda and that will be approved at the May 6th meeting. So those are the only two changes to the existing agenda. Anyone have any other questions or concerns on the agenda?
I'm going to approve this amended.
Okay. I got a motion by Bruce Wolf, second by Rick Seiler, to approve the agenda as amended. So if there's no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. First thing on the agenda is, Ken, I think you're going to handle this one?
Yep, so first item on the agenda is a request for a 90-day extension on the plat being filed for Bell's rendition. If you recall, the council reviewed this plat on February 4th and approved it at that time. The 90-day term period would end on May 5th. And while the applicant is working towards getting the plat filed, the final wetland review was not able to occur by Lister County because of the winter weather, and they're doing the final wetland review this week, and we would expect the plat to be filed, hopefully within a couple of weeks here. But they're just requesting full 90 days just in case there's any other delays in that. So our ordinance does allow for one extension up to 90 days to file that plat, and that is what they're requesting.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Comments? Okay. Now I got a motion by Rick Seiler.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan to approve the 90-day extension. There's no other further comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. Next.
All right, so this item is...
Are you taking this one?
I am. Jump in, ordnance. So this actually item for small cell wireless facility design guidelines does directly relate to a question Bruce Wolf asked at the last meeting on April 1st about the deadline of today, April 15th, for cities to adopt small cell aesthetic standards as recorded by an FCC order. Included on basically the backside of the memo is an article that the league had published on April 1st about deadline, and we talked about it briefly at the meeting on the 1st, but we have a little more background on that. So over the past 18 months, staff actually has been working, myself and Bruce Remmers primarily, on amendments for right-of-way ordinance that would address small cell facilities. We had kind of put that on hold. It had last been reviewed with the planning commission on March 28th of 2018, and they were looking at the aesthetic requirements and they were looking at a few other things by which we could make these cell, small cell facilities either conditionally used in residential or historic downtown districts. And kind of around that time, there were some lawsuits that had been filed specifically with the FCC and then just other legal questions that had been brought up. So City Training at that time kind of told us to put it on hold a little bit, and we basically hadn't gotten back to it until this memo from the league came out. And it would have been Thursday of the week following our planning commission, the council meeting on April 1st that Glenn and I were at a league loss control training session, and this was actually a topic of one of the sessions that they had for city staff that were at the meeting. And they recommended regardless of where you were at with your right-of-way ordinance language, to very quickly get something in place by today's deadline for the aesthetic standards. So they actually had given us a set of draft guideline language that we could utilize for taking a look at. Their main thing in the league was that, look, if you don't get it in place by today, they feel that you could lose out the ability to do that even if you have been looking at ordinance changes before. And they're saying, yes, they understand it's a very short timeline to review that, but if you adopt something tonight, you can always change it in the future. So even if you don't think it's perfect, just get it on the books. They recommended adopting it simply by a policy with a resolution, which we are proposing tonight, rather than going the full ordinance route because we still have to amend our right-of-way ordinance to address specific requirements for the actual permitting guidelines and all those things that we needed to get the aesthetic requirements in place tonight. So that's what we have in front of you. Basically, the proposed guidelines are some very generic rules that the league recommended we take a look at adopting. And the one that I have in front of you was very, very similar to what a number of other cities, including Northfield, Winona, Peak Rock Lake, St. Charles, and many others to name a few, have adopted in the past few weeks here. So we're not trying to reinvent the wheel, but in effect, it does, under its purpose of the ordinance, or not the ordinance, the policy, provide for, providing the ability for small cell wireless to go out in a community, but also protect the character of the city through its design. So really, the gist of the aesthetic policy is that law allows these small cell facilities, which can be a pole, within city right-of-way. That we have no control over. But what this provides for is some requirements specifically under section 4, for aesthetic requirements, or requiring that they be shrouded. Statute allows that the entire antenna enclosure can't be over six square feet anyway, or six cubic feet, excuse me. So that is already limited by statute. And then what this also requires is that either the wireless facility has to be directly in line with the top of the tower, can't extend more than, let's see if they word that, twice the width of the item on which it's mounted, or it can have kind of a vertical antenna item projecting directly horizontal from the tower that has to be at least 10 feet from the ground, so you don't have siloic removal, snore removal equipment hitting into something that may be hanging off a pole. So those are kind of the key two items in the aesthetics appearance set. So it's being shrouded, can't be two times wider than the actual diameter of the pole. And then if it's mounted off to the side, it has to be at least 10 feet off the ground. Other things it requires are, you can't have, you know, fully visible cables, wires, and connectors, so you, again, keep the clean appearance of the structure up. Addresses colors for the item so that if you have a support pole, whatever that might be, in color, that the equipment match that color. It does go on to say that if by chance it's mounted on a wooden pole, kind of the common standard is that there's a zinc or aluminum type, stainless steel type color to match the metal, or to match the wood portion in there. We really don't have any wood poles that we can think of. Been talking to Bruce about this. And then for ground equipment, statute again limits that to 28 cubic feet in volume for any box or anything that would be on the ground, and this requires that they be screened with 100% screening, either by equipment enclosures with plant material around it within two years of installation. And again, has to match to the color of the support structure and the wireless structure. And then kind of the final portion of the aesthetic requirements is that if they have any logos on the equipment, you can't have a big Verizon logo or a big T-Mobile logo. They have to remove or paint over those unnecessary equipment details. One thing they do have to provide for is an RF warning sticker on the device, which is a requirement, so we can't have them not have that on there, but we can tell them not to have the name of their company on there. So those are kind of the big ones for that. And then it gets into a little bit on preferred locations, being industrial districts, highway right-of-way, and then retail and commercial districts, but not being preferred in our downtown B1 districts. As you're aware, we're trying to create a new aesthetic look for our downtown area. And we don't need it cluttered up with these poles if we kind of all help it. Again, it's not saying that they can't be there, it's just a less preferred option for them, because again, they can locate them in any area they would wish to do. And then residential districts and parks are the other ones that we'd rather not have those in. And then finally, provides for on the guidelines for placement that you can't have more than one wireless facility less than 150 feet from each other. So you're trying to limit that, you know, every provider puts a tower along the street and area. They've got to be at least 150 feet apart. And if they want to be that, as close as they can, they probably have to co-locate with another provider. So that's kind of the key things. And this, again, is probably not the perfect language. It is language that a number of cities have adopted kind of as a stopgap measure so we get something on the book. I think they're decent requirements, similar to the language we had been talking about for our right-of-way ordinance that we were working on. Glenn, Bruce, and I met last week to kind of go over the, this draft aesthetic policy, and we think it'll cover the major concerns that we have and actually probably do a pretty good long-term solution for Bruce as well when we eventually get to the point of getting right-of-way ordinance adopted. But this should be a good, good starting point in the meantime.
Do we need to have any rights reserved in here? I mean, that for future, I didn't see that. I see the limitations, which kind of touches on it, but, I mean, we need a section that says we reserve the right to change or modify at any time or based on, you know, the way technology is evolving. It's quick, I, you know, we can't foresee what's out there in ten years.
Yeah, the very last sentence of the policy actually says modifications of the policy will be effective on the date those modifications are approved by the city council. So that's basically saying, whoever chooses to change them, the date those are changed, this one will become effective.
Oh, okay, that's what that...
Yep, that's kind of why we, on the policy, on the front page, as of all of our policies, we'll put be adopted by date, you know, 4/15. If we ever change it, we'd probably just have, originally adopted 4/15 and then amended whatever date we come back.
Okay, I'm just used to seeing it written a little different way, but...
Yeah.
All right, you see that?
We've got it covered in there.
Perfect.
Ken, are you seeing this used, or having, has any city that you know been affected by this so far?
Actually been, had these applied to applications to be made?
I don't know of any, Bruce, or if you're aware of any public utility related...
I know like Rochester has, and talking with them when we were working on the right-of-way part of this, they had issues with it being right down in their core downtown wanting to do it. Again, we thought they had it all settled with the right-of-way issues until the FCC stepped in and said, no, you guys can't use that as a preempt to what we want to have here. And so now, kind of to backtrack quickly, we're trying to do this so that at least they're going to come to us with an application before they can just put something up.
A typical user would be a private business or what would it be?
So they could still go on private business buildings and so, without really any of the city's involvement, but if they want to use our mainline corridors or our public right-of-way and/or say our streetlight poles and so, amount that equipment to it, at least then we're going to have a chance here to weigh in and see what's what they put on it.
So like, give me any analysis, who are putting those up?
It's typically your cell carriers that are doing it, or Verizon, and Sprint, and so are the ones doing that.
So it's city Wi-Fi then?
No, no, it's typically the big, big companies, wireless companies.
Yeah, we kind of talked about it, too. We have pretty good coverage from our towers that we do have, even downtown, because we don't have, you know, skyscraper buildings where we'll run into that. But where we could have companies wanting to do it is to put out the 5G network, which does take a little more traffic than a tower can probably handle, but not quite there yet. So I don't think we're in any fear of a company coming in tomorrow and doing it, but even if they did, you know, I think this covers the aesthetics pretty well, so you just wouldn't have an ugly wooden pole go up in the right-of-way with a bunch of equipment on it, open to the general view of the passing public.
If this is approved, the publishing requirement, you think it'll be on the...
I would get that on the website tonight yet, after the meeting, and then Lee said, get it on your website number one, and then take a copy and pin it up in your hallway on the bulletin board. And that'll cover the publishing.
But because it's not an ordinance, I don't have to publish it in the newspaper?
Any other questions? Okay, if not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve this policy.
I'll second.
Second by Maggie Bass. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay.
I hear that was by way of resolution, correct?
Yeah. What? Yeah, the resolution to approve the policy.
Which is good for me.
Okay. Thank you.
You're taking this one too, Ken?
I will, yes.
What is Bruce doing today?
He's got my back.
He's got your back, okay.
So another item that Glenn, Bruce, and I worked on this week.
You must have got the short straw every time you guys met.
I did. No, actually, this one in particular was really driven by the planning and building department. So in the 2018 budget, planning and building department, specifically the building department in this case, had budgeted funds for renting a large-scale scanner to take our old building permits, kind of the large four-foot by three-foot drawings that are all rolled up in the basement, and get those converted into digital format for our electronic digital addressing files. So we've been doing that since December, and while we've had it, we've had public works and utility staff come in and take a look at the scanner and actually give it a try for both printing and scanning and a number of other plans that they have in their records as well. And not only the building and planning, but public works and utilities have found that scanning function on that large-scale scanner is very useful for all of our departments collectively. And rather than just have our rental funds run out for the year, and May basically is when that would end, we'd like to have the council consider entering into a 60-month lease term with Metro Sales, and so we have all of our current copier and printer lease agreements with currently. So this would be for the Ricoh large-scale scanning printers you see here, it's actually in our basement right now that we've been renting. These are the same interfaces as our other copiers and printers. It's network-connected, so basically any staff and other departments and buildings can print to it, and then pick those up at City Hall when they do that. So what we're proposing here is a lease term to start at the end of April, basically run through April of 2024. The lease term is $215 a month with additional quarterly maintenance charge of $152. So overall, between the four departments, planning, building, public works, and utilities, it would be a $66 a month additional expense. I know for planning department, I had in 2020 CIP a capital purchase of $5,000 for the replacement of our current large-scale planner, or printer that doesn't do any scanning. That's just a 24-inch large-scale planner, not a 36-inch like this one. I do have maintenance of print head and cartridge on that 10-year-old model, but I know based on the 2016 service I had done to it, will cost at least $1,700, and would rather not have to do that again. And then additionally, we also have to pay about $1,000 a year in ink and paper for that unit. This unit would replace all that with the annual and quarterly lease and maintenance and upkeep, as we do with all of our other printers. It'd also be nice not to own it and have the expense of breakdowns that we've had on the current printer that we have. So while we did not have this lease under 2019 budgets, basically there is a $531.28 cost to each of our four departments through the remainder of the year. I know that my department, planning alone, will save $1,000 in ink and paper that I haven't had to buy for our current planner, or printer for this year, and the other departments too, believe they can handle that as well. One thing that I've not done in the past, and I think we're trying to account for individual budgets to, you know, pay for their expenses more directly. I've done historically all the printing for big maps for public works and utilities and never billed that out directly, so I think this helps account for that better as everybody will print to the printer and will be able to track it that way, rather than just having the planning department kind of take up the cost for everybody. We believe that by the end of the 60-month term that we'd have all of our big-scale plans scanned in and we would reevaluate at that point if we need to continue to have a scanner function. Large-scale printers certainly something long-term that we'd like to keep around, but might not need that scanning at the end of the five years. But anyway, I think it's a pretty good price for that, again, with our existing company that we have for scanners and printers elsewhere in all of our city facilities. So look for your consideration of the lease agreement now and for five years into the future for our departments.
So what is the existing piece of equipment that could be traded in?
So we wouldn't trade that in. We could try to sell it. Like I said, there's costs of $100 in maintenance that needs to be done on that, probably within a month. I would just intend to use up the ink and paper that we have in there. When that's done, we could see if there'd be anybody that'd be interested in buying it, but they're going to have to put probably $1,700 in repair to it. There's no trade-in for it on lease, so we would have to kind of go our own on that. I honestly don't know if it's worth $100 or nothing, but I don't think it's worth too much. It's a 10-year-old unit, and it's a number of models old.
So once it's done, are you going to aim?
We would bring it back to the council to declare surplus, but I think we'd try to sell it, but I don't...
But I mean, you wouldn't just leave it in the basement to look at dust.
Nope. Too big for that. And it's in Mike's office, I think you'd rather run out of there.
You should tell him that the new plans that are coming in and sitting in big, long rolls are mostly now starting to come electronically, and that's why we have the...
Eventually, we'll get away from the paper completely, but we have these old plans, and we're still doing plan reviews on building additions and things, and we, we gotta get those digitally and so we can do our plan reviews appropriately. But I think you guys have got old ASBILs and a number of other things that, that's the only copy we have, and if we don't scan them in, we're bringing it up a creek if we don't get a backup, so.
Did you get any other bids, Ken, or did you check out any other companies?
We did not, just due to the fact that this is kind of the company that we've had our lease agreement through with other companies. And just being the Rico and the whole interface, it uses the same kind of protocol for those items that are currently in City Hall.
Okay, and then when are those leases up?
Don't know the reason.
We did that, we went out, we solicited proposals, and we did that the last time when we chose to go with them.
Right. But what I'm saying is if this is a five-year lease and all the other equipment is only two years remaining on it, you know, are we locking ourselves into this interface amongst this and all of a sudden the price goes, they get it on the back end, as opposed to this seems like maybe a really good deal?
I don't know if I'd worry about that. Too long, long-term event, this was, let's say we went to a different direction with a different vendor for our other copiers and printers, I don't know if I'd be too worried about that. Generally speaking, you know, we're just going to be doing scanning on this by and large, more than even printing on it, so that's just a matter of feeding the paper through it. I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel that that would be a negative to move on with the remainder of our facilities if we needed to, but I, having, not having gotten other prices out there, I don't know to compare that, but it seemed like a fair, fair price for the lease.
Ken? Maybe I missed it. What was the rent, rent you're currently paying on it?
Uh, we're currently paying a little over $500 a month for the rent on it.
Is this a new machinery used?
Brand new. Well, it was new when they delivered it in December. So at the end of the term, it would be about five years, or five years and five months And as noted, they do provide all the quarterly maintenance charge under covers all the calls for service that we need in it, just like any other equipment that we have at City Hall. That's been one of the tough parts about our owning that piece of equipment. We've had, more than paid for that printer a couple of different times when we've had any call on it. So that's been the difficult part of owning that equipment, and I think, just looking back at our $1,000 a year in ink and paper, none of these repair costs that are getting increasingly more expensive, it just doesn't pay to own it anymore. Or even if buying new, in my opinion, I would not even recommend buying a new one at that $5,000 that we initially anticipated for in the CIP.
The five-year term, is that, did we get better rates because of that five years? Is that how you tracked compared it?
Any other comments? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'm moved.
Five-year lease, I got a motion by Rick Seiler. I will second that. So if there's no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. Next on the agenda is, at the last council meeting, we talked about doing a workshop, which would then kind of puts our priorities as a council maybe for the next two years, since that would be the lease term left of some of us. So with that in mind...
Mayor, do you want to flip to the 4A? I just got a better calendar with...
Okay.
Other items on it that aren't on the calendar, if you want with this one.
Okay.
That might be helpful in that date selection. Because any that are woven in that are on that, looking at the same schedule, is the next item, 4A, as far as dates to interview for board and commission. So if you're going to commit, you might as well look at both of those items.
And what are we looking at? We're looking at a two-hour session?
And for which, is there two, acts of two? Maybe more than four of the...
Yeah, we're going to, one is for having that workshop, which we as a council are going to look at priorities.
Okay, priorities, that'll be a workshop.
And then the next one, 4A, is actually setting up time to do interviews...
For boards and commissions.
For boards and commissions.
Yeah, right, we got to make motions, so it's got to be a special city council meeting.
On the boards and commission?
Yeah, we got to make motions to approve.
Well, we do that during the council meeting at a later date. We'll do the interviews, and then what we kind of do is then, after, let's say, we're done interviewing, we kind of talk about, you know, who we feel would be the best, be able to fill those slots. And then at a council meeting, I make those recommendations, a motion is made then to approve them, and second, and the action is taken, and then the economy effective 6-1 of 2019.
Yeah, and the actual date for the, you'd make those recommendations would be May 20th.
Right.
So somewhere between now and May 20th, we can get the interviews done and out of the way.
So I guess the first thing we should look at, if we're thinking we want to have a workshop, and depends on at least a couple of hours to kind of go through.
Do you want to do it like on Saturday morning, or what do you guys get, remember?
No, usually we don't do it on the weekend. Saturday morning, I'm golfing, Rick, what are you thinking?
I never learned how to go.
It's the 29th of April.
Yeah, the 29th, for me as well. I think that's my, my, do we have a 8:00 thing that...
That's at 7:30 in the morning.
What's in the morning?
Yeah.
It says PM on the machine.
Another 29th, EDA. It says 6:30 PM.
No, the 29th says 7:30.
Oh, what's the 17th one? This one coming up this week, the Chamber of Commerce?
Yes, that's the St. Peter Chamber of Commerce is coming here. So that's at, in the evening at 6:30.
Is that something that, that's posted, right? So the rest of us can come to that as well? Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah. And that's with the chamber and the EDA.
City administrator from St. Peter are, are coming.
Yeah, the 29th is EDA, 7:30 in the morning.
And Bruce, you have a commission meeting that day too, so.
Right, and that will be done by 4:30? Yep, 30.
So are we looking at the 29th?
How is work out?
Yeah, 29th sounds good to me too.
Yeah, that would work for me too. The only thing I have is that morning EDA meeting, so. 29th, what do we want? Pick a time. You want to start at 6 o'clock, Ken?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, okay.
Bruce, it might cut you a little short.
No, he knows how to handle it.
We'll be good.
Yeah. You don't have much on the docket? Okay, so then the priorities workshop will be on the 29th at 6:00 PM, starting. And let's plan on, you know, it could be up two hours. After that, we kind of lose interest. Okay. You don't have to make a motion or anything on that one, do we, Mike?
No, just consensus.
Okay.
Okay, so the 29th, we're having our.
Workshop, priorities workshop. We're going to kind of look at what we feel that we should have a, council would like to have, set some direction on and get things accomplished. Go to the next. Year and a half.
Yeah, the direction's off.
Okay, so then 4A is interviews.
And I just wanted to point out that the park board meeting on May 14th is actually moved to the 21st, so May 14th isn't open.
So the park board is the 21st now?
Yeah, yeah, just for the month of May.
Yep, okay.
And then with the candidates we have, you're going to need about two and a half hours, assuming you use the 15 minutes, probably maybe the two times fast.
Okay.
They're all done at one time.
We can do it that or you can do it two times. It's up to, I think we've done both.
And early the whole council attends?
Yep.
For the interviewing. These are for appointments to boards and commissions and.
And it's a closed meeting?
No, it's an open meeting, but typically council's the only one that's there with each of the candidates. But it is a public meeting.
It is public.
It's a special meeting, yes.
And usually we just do it in the conference room downstairs.
Do you have standardized questions?
We have in the past. We've had, Mike's had some questions that we use in the past, but we're pretty, pretty relaxed. We've kind of, you know, everyone can ask their own questions or type of thing. So it's not like it's set in stone. I know we've had a form that we've used in the past that is in the packet and but, you know, we've had veered off a two of you if you have something that's specific.
And you've got returning board members and new board members, so.
Right.
Or we also have one individual that applied for four different commissions. I'm assuming we're just going to interview that person one time?
Yeah, it's just indicating where their interest is.
Right. And then, you know, find out what her priorities would be.
But in years past, we actually interviewed for a specific, usually for two nights. Like the first night might be park board and EDA and then the next night is golf. And isn't that how we've done it in the past?
No, it's, we've just had where the candidates have interest and sometimes their interest crosses different boards or commissions.
Right, and then we kind of ask them, you know, what, of the two, which would be their favorite one type of thing. So it's just more like, you know, when they're only asking for one, then we know, okay, this person is interviewing for the golf, let's say.
If you've had more than one night, it's because you can't accommodate all of the candidates in one night.
Okay, no, it just seems to me that we had interviewed specific, for specific boards on specific nights. I, maybe I'm wrong, so.
So it looks like we have 10 people, 10 different people.
And we have to leave enough, we have to leave enough time for when you pick it tonight that Barb is able to make contact and get this coordinated and scheduled with 10 different people.
Oh, we know Barb can do that.
No problem.
See? Okay, so we have to look at our calendars. Again, we need to have this finished by the council, the 20th. So if we think that April is pretty booked, we can start looking at May.
Why don't, why don't we try to choose two dates in case some of the candidates can't come to just the one date and then we've got.
Okay, that's a good suggestion.
Last year you had it on a Monday and a Tuesday.
Do you try to avoid normal city council meetings then?
We've done it on those two, yeah.
Yeah, it's not mandatory that all councils be there. I know that there's different times you have gaps and that.
Yeah, at least three, you know.
Well, we're going to council meeting on the 6th. It's got to be done by the 20th?
Yeah, that's when we'll make our recommendation so that they can be.
So we could do it on the 13th?
Well, we could do 13th and then back up the 14th, since there's no park board meeting.
Right.
I don't know how everyone's scheduled.
So 13th and 14th?
Well, we're not, you just hold your taters there.
Hold my what?
Yeah, right now I'm wide open on that, that whole week, which is unusual for me.
13th, 14th is also good for me.
Yeah, I can make that work.
Okay, so let's plan the 13th. Do you want to start at 6 again? And we'll see if we, if we can schedule everyone that date. We can just do it one day. That way we're only taking one night off the deal. But if she, if Barb can't schedule all of them on the 13th, we'll see if we can schedule them on the 14th and we'll shoot for 6 o'clock on both nights. Okay. Thank you everyone very much, council. Okay. So that takes care of four and 4A. So now we're at the consent agenda. Remember that we took out the April 1st meeting minutes, so anything, any questions regarding anything else on the consent agenda? B, C, or D, that anyone has any questions on?
No group.
There's no questions. I got a motion by Rick Seiler. Seconded by Sean Ryan. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? All right, we're to the miscellaneous section already. Mitch?
Good.
Mitch is good. Patrick?
And a happy and safe Easter.
Okay, thank you very much, Patrick. Bruce?
Nothing.
Thanks again for showing up. We appreciate your. Anytime you're here, Bruce, we know it's a great.
It's going to go smooth, right?
Yeah, it always goes smooth. Glenn?
I touched on it a little bit. Wednesday evening, April 17th, we have that special EDA meeting with the city administrator from St. Peter and the Chamber of Commerce Executive Director, I believe. And they will talk to us, tell us what went good in St. Peter when they redid 169 through downtown. What they learned, what they could have done better, hopefully kind of lead us down a smoother road. So that's Wednesday night. Thursday afternoon, starting at noon, we're having another, what we're calling the business meetings, which is inviting every business owner and property owner on Main Street got a notice in the mail that they can come anytime between noon and 5:00 PM on, on Thursday, the 18th. So that we can talk to them. They can sure come to us with questions, but we really need to make contact with them. We need to talk to them as far as getting temporary easements from them. Talk to them about their water and sewer utility going into their buildings, any other concerns they might have. So we're, we're leaving it wide open. We're not saying that you have to come at a certain time. Come anytime. It's going to take, we probably need 15 minutes unless they got a lot of questions for us. We probably need 15 minutes of their time just to get some more information, make them aware of a few things, start getting business taken care of.
And what time is that? The morning? Is that you going to start that?
Uh, starting at noon on Wednesday, 12 o'clock.
And that's going to be an open house type of situation?
Yep, they can come anytime they want. There's no technical formal presentation. It is just going to be very open. We just want to touch base with them and make them aware of what we need from them. We need some documents from them. We need to make them aware of certain things.
Have you started? Have you had contact with some owners already?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, the last one we had, I believe we had 12 people come. We were hoping for a lot more. We got to touch base with a lot more people. The business owners are the easy ones. It's the property owners that don't necessarily live here in town, don't own the business. They just own the building. Those are the ones we've got to make contact with also. Golf course is 97% done. There's just a few things that I want to talk to the contractor about. We'll, I'm trying to schedule with them right now. Just talk to them today. Basically, we will call it a walkthrough. We just want to walk through everything and there's just a couple of minor things I want them to touch up, make it look a little bit better. Otherwise it is done. So that's all the act.
Okay, good, thank you. Ken?
Nothing.
Mike?
29th, that special meeting with EDA is that they're looking at that they have a proposal to purchase a lot of industrial parks. So we've got a public hearing and a resolution to consider on the sale of the property. That'll come to the council on May 6th for your final approval, so we'll make progress on that. Glenn didn't happen to mention tomorrow, we have a stakeholder committee meeting with the committee, which is, I believe, finalizing recommendations that'll be forthcoming to you in the near future with some of the look and some proposals for downtown. Glenn and I have to go to Van Keo for 60% plan review tomorrow. So we're, we're slowly gaining, as he mentioned, all of the real estate temporary easements have been mailed out to all of the property owners. So it's a matter of corralling all those and getting those collective and immediately answering any questions along that front. Golf course was open, the baseball stadium was open, but temporarily had to close due to the snow last week, so we're hoping for warm weather this week to get those all reopened again.
Anything else? Okay, Barb?
No.
Okay, Maggie?
No.
Sean?
No.
Rick?
None.
Bruce? The only thing I have is, Bruce, we met with Kuvish Realty. I don't know if Ken told you about the wire in the back or is that something?
We met with them too after your conversation. And we're working with them in regards to, they own that, that service in the far back.
Okay.
And so they're going to consider whether or not they want to do any upgrades to that or not. So we're working with them on that.
Okay. I don't have anything else, so I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a second by Rick Seiler. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Thank you, everyone.